Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City West Bend Licensing Board for January 17th. Note that we do have a quorum and we have two items on the agenda. The first being approval of minutes, the Licensing Board regular meeting minutes for January 3rd.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it would be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we have one agenda under consideration. Number two, appointment of Agent Nicholas Novacek to The Bend. West Bend Historic Theater, Inc., 125 North Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments on this? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it would be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the Licensing Board, adjourn by the call of the Chair.
All right, and good evening. I will call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. We have three items on the agenda this evening. First is the approval of the meeting minutes for the Finance Committee meeting January 3rd, 2022.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Second, we have a resolution to accept $95,775,000 from the Wisconsin Department of Administration Destination Marketing Organization Grant Program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, we have an approval for the proposal of engineering services on the Milwaukee River TMDL compliance planning. Max, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. This item is to consider recommendation to approve a proposal for engineering services from Short Elliott Hendrickson. In May of 2019, the DNR renewed the city's MS4 permit and we entered into an agreement with SEH to help us comply with the first phase of this new permit. And that phase included meeting some compliance requirements. For example, we slam modeling for each reach shed within the city and presentation of a spreadsheet summary outlining the required percent reduction in each, on each reach shed. They performed the modeling and they're preparing a final report which we have to turn into the DNR by the end of March. But now we're entering that phase two of this permitting where we're going to have to present to the DNR what, what should, what reach sheds are not in compliance with the TMDL reduction and how the city would propose to implement solutions to reach those targets. So in order to perform the work for that phase two, we are proposing to accept the agreement that SEH put together that outlines all the tasks required for this and an amount not to exceed $60,000 in their proposal to do this work.
Is it in the proposal from SEH?
Yes, it's a proposal from SEH.
Okay, gotcha.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions for Max or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you, thank you Max.
Thank you.
All right, with no further business before the Finance Committee, I'll adjourn.
Thank you, and good evening once again. Call to order the City West Bend Common Council meeting for January 17th. Note that we do have a quorum. With all present and accounted for, please rise for the posting of the colors.
Get uniform personnel. Stand. Uniform personnel, up, and hut. Detail. Hut. Order. Hut. Get uniform personnel, freeze and arm. Detail. Hut. Freeze and. Hut. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Hut. Uniform personnel, order, arm. Detail. Hut. Freeze and. Hut. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Hut. Uniform personnel, order, arm. Detail. Hut. Freeze and. Hut. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Hut. Uniform personnel, order, arm.
Thank you so much. And with that, we have 15 items on our agenda, the first being approval of minutes, the Common Council regular meeting minutes for January 3rd.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it would be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll kick this off. We've got a number of presentations. The first one is the State of the City presented by myself. Members of the Common Council, administration, department heads, along with the many business owners, residents, and visitors of West Bend, I am truly blessed to be able to deliver my State of the City address during my second year as your mayor. There are words that I often use in my vocabulary in everyday conversation that I'm aware that I instinctively say. When asked how I'm doing, I often say fantastic, or when things go well, I say wonderful. Now, I'll admit that sometimes these words are said with some sarcasm, if not sincere. But the other word I use, especially when talking about our city to individuals, groups, and other entities, is the word blessed. A word with religious connotations meaning worthy of adoration, reverence, and to be thankful for. This year, I would like to emphasize my talk on how blessed we truly are to live, work, and play in the city of West Bend. First, we're thankful to live in a safe community. Year after year, police, fire, and EMS services continues to be our largest budget and expense, and for good reason. Our primary responsibility as municipal government is to serve and protect all who enter our city. Continuation of service, a mantra used by our fire department, is key to make sure all who have been in our care reach a stable and safe condition whenever possible. To this end, police responded to 66,700 policing activities and fire and EMS 4,600 calls throughout 2021, and completed a combined 8,000-plus hours of total training. Our growing city continues to utilize our resources. To this end, our city completed a department-level study of the overall operations of the fire department and look forward to delving deeper into the results of and implementation. Our tri-annual union negotiations occurred with respect and decency while still keeping taxpayers in mind. I appreciate the constellations made to offset the increase in costs of healthcare while making necessary contract cleanups and compensation adjustments that are vital to the employees in these departments. As of two weeks ago, we saw new leadership within the police department with the retirement of Chief Moyler and the start of Chief Timothy Deering, who was a dedicated lifelong public servant, who has already begun implementing new policies and building the team necessary around him to be successful. For all this security and protection in police, fire, and emergency services, we are truly blessed. Please join me in applauding these fine men and women. Strong infrastructure is a vital concern we pursued into more serious light as of late. Roads such as Mayor, Maple, Forge, and Forest were either replaced or constructed new with addition to crack filling, sealing, and collaboration with utilities. Add to this the all-important 7th Avenue reconstruction that we're all thankful that we can drive on once again. A total of $7.3 million was spent in 2021. In 2022, we're not stopping there. A total of $2.4 million will be spent to tackle 18th, Laurel Drive North, Pennsylvania, and 5th Avenue in addition to designing and maintaining others. Add to this, our partnership with Washington County has resulted in a wonderful tool to be utilized by staff on both sides. This tool allows staff to more predictably budget for and plan infrastructure expenses and help to accurately measure our progress. While it was no surprise, West Bend seems to be somewhat behind on keeping up with our infrastructure. However, we are in a historic moment to make real progress. We know that there's no one-size-fits-all answer, but our funding, a looming federal infrastructure bill, positively performing Tiff districts, and continued partnership with the county could all combine to tackle this problem more seriously than ever before. And for this, we are truly blessed. We've continued our trend of strong economic growth. Multi-unit housing and hotels, Trails Edge, the District, and Marriott's Town Place Suites are revitalizing underutilized areas of our city and are drawing more activity and people into our thriving downtown. These projects alone represent $52.5 million of assessed value in tax incremental financing districts. These districts are the tools by which we not only improve those key areas, but better those around them. Implementation of Main Street bounce-back grants, facade improvement grants, and increased tourism dollars can all help expand upon this work. Milwaukee Tool is near completion in the West Bend Manufacturing Center with a 95,000-square-foot facility. Existing businesses, Comar Manufacturing and Metal Craft in Mayville have expanded their footprint to account for increased workloads and employees. Small and commercial businesses continue to thrive. And forgive me, this is a long list, but that's great. Dairy Queen, Jersey Mike Subs, Client First, Clockin, Classy Artist Box, Oakbrook Dental, Stifle, Crane and Arrow, Urban Farm Girl, The Cheese Wedge, 6th Avenue Barbecue, Vino, Dooley's, Christie Maxx, Respawn Retro Gaming, Murphy &amp; Prochthouser, Hype Nutrition, We Rock the Spectrum Indoor Playground, Sassafras Candles, and of course, many more have all opened their doors or expanded. Add to all this, the recent announcement of a purchase of the vacant Shopko property should excite us all to see another blighted property turned around. Our economic development team, engineering, and planning departments are busy, and we certainly want this to continue. We should remain hungry and determined to not let this momentum die. This is how we continue to grow our way to find solutions rather than to tax our way, and for this, we are truly blessed. And finally, our city would be pretty boring if not for the many exciting recreational opportunities we provide. The new library rec center in the basement of the library is complete and being utilized to continue to teach and inspire our youth. Carl Cusfield is ready to host the next generation of games on its turf. The Regner Beach House is on its way to get reconstructed and expanded for all who utilize our amenities. And of course, watch for work to be done on the west side of the Riverwalk along the Milwaukee River. Many partnerships, grants, and donations were used to make this dream become a reality. For all this and more, we are truly blessed. Now, being as blessed as we are does not mean we are perfect. The implementation of steps within the aforementioned fire study will take a lot of tough decisions and planning. Recruiting and retaining employees while modifying our compensation plan will take creativity and a willingness to support the public sector in order to complete, to compete at a hectic job market and a time-bearing time period being called the Great Resignation. And the quality of our road infrastructure is not getting any better. Serious conversations and actions need to take place to keep up with and improve upon our transportation and utility systems. However, in the end, I'm optimistic, and I hope you are too. Our family recently befriended another young family who had moved back into the area after community hopping over the past decade. Right away, the outward appearance of our city resonated with them. They felt safe to live here. They were amazed at how our city had grown and the job opportunities were aplenty. They were excited at all the fun things to do in our city. And in the end, this is why we do what we do. Our residents all want the same thing, to live their lives without having to worry or think about the policy or budgetary decisions of their local government. They want garbage to get picked up, emergency services to come when called upon, activities to enjoy, and streets to be plowed. Our job is to ensure that these services are provided for the best value for their hard-earned tax dollars. I don't know about you, but I think West Bend is pretty fantastic and wonderful, and we are truly blessed to live and represent such a city. I'll end this talk the exact same way that I did last year because this message still rings true. The state of our city is strong. We have been blessed with the economic fortitude to persevere. We have invested in and strongly support our public safety divisions and the rule of law, and we continue to provide economic and recreational wins that encourage people to want to visit, work, and live in our great city. I'm honored to be mayor of such a city. We as a council should be proud of our community and the work that we get to do day in and day out. Thank you for your time, and thank you to all who serve the great city of West Bend. As if you're not sick of hearing me talk, we're going to talk a little bit more as we have the Optimist Day proclamation. If I can get a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. And all is in favor, so it would be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this so reads, "Whereas volunteers working with young people who are our joy of today and our hope for tomorrow are exuberant representatives of the potential to be reached and dreams to come true, they are also unbounded in their enthusiasm to use their own talent, skills, and hard work to make a difference in others' lives. And whereas members of Optimist International will celebrate Optimist Day throughout the world the first Thursday of every February to promote their efforts in helping and recognizing the young people and make a difference in their communities, and who will encourage a greater exchange of ideas between young people and adults. And whereas there are 2,400 Optimist Clubs with more than 70,000 members and Optimist International and Optimist members throughout the world that carry out more than 6,500 service projects and that serve 6 million young people a year. Therefore, be resolved that I, Kristoffy Jenkins, Mayor of the great city of West Bend, do hereby proclaim the first Thursday of every month, of February, as Optimist Day in the city of West Bend. May this day instill pride in our city's Optimists for all their accomplishments and for the impact they have to truly make a difference in others' lives." All right. Now, I know you guys weren't just here to hear me talk. We have some oath of offices. So first off, we're going to take up number three, the oath of office for firefighter, paramedic, Austin Brewer.
Aye, Austin Brewer.
Aye, Austin Brewer.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter, paramedic.
As firefighter, paramedic.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'll just take a moment to introduce Austin to the community. Austin is a local kid. He grew up in Hartford, went to Hartford High School, where he still volunteers with the high school, and he coaches baseball. So if they play West Bend, East or West, they're going to have to take sides.
He took his associate degree in Wachishaw and is paramedic in Black Valley.
He still is active in the community, and we're excited to have him. He's a third-generation firefighter from Asherpin, right? So his dad is also a firefighter there. So he comes from a long line, and I don't think Austin has stopped smiling since I made that phone call that said he had gotten the job. So we're excited to have him. He's excited to be here, and we can't wait. His mom is going to do his pinning.
Tiffany?
Pinning by a family member signifies that this is a family-oriented, there's families behind him, and when Austin goes into a fire, his family goes into fire with him. He leaves for work in the morning, his family's going with him. And so it's, it's our hope and prayer for you that, that you have a safe and healthy and happy career and a long career, and we're excited to have you here in West Bend. So his mom Tiffany's going to do the honors.
Like you could have said, this is my mom Tiffany. This is my younger brother Zach, and this is my dad Jeff, who started this with me at Star School. Like she said, I've been around since I was born, so it's been a work-rewarding thing for me, so thanks.
And the fun doesn't stop there. We're going to go into items four, five, six, and seven. These are the oath of office for police officers Nathan Muhonan, Samantha Humphner, Colin Medved, and Aaron Eskrich, hopefully I'm saying that right. Before we get into that, I would like to invite our new chief, Chief Timothy Deering. I'd like him to say a couple words, introduce himself to the community as he was just anointed about a week or so ago, so welcome, chief.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity. Probably a reintroduction for most of the community. My wife and I moved here 27 years ago. We've raised three kids here. West Bend is home for us. We're active in the community, and as you said, I'm honored to serve our community and make it the safest community it can be. But what I'd really like to do is introduce you to our department. There's 80 people that work day in and day out through a pandemic, through social unrest, through crises, through family vacations, family celebrations to make sure that our community is safe. And those really are the heroes. I sit in an office, I sleep at night, they're awake, they're out fighting crime every day, protecting and serving our community. So they're really ones that we should be honoring and will honor. I'm excited to introduce to the community your four brand-new police officers. Heard much about recruitment and retention problems across the field, across the nation. I will tell you that I strongly believe that really what it is, is our first filtering process. If you go back and look at the officers that you've met here over the last five or six years when we've been in this crisis, they've all been extremely qualified candidates, extremely compassionate candidates, extremely dedicated public servants. So yep, it's a struggle. It's worth the struggle because we're putting the best we can out on the street to protect and serve. I'm proud of every single one of them. We celebrate our officers quite a bit. There's a lot of other people that work at our department to support them and make sure. We have tremendously dedicated dispatch staff, nine dispatchers who work throughout the night, who work throughout the weekends, who are not only our police dispatchers, but also the community's resource that take every phone call from, and we can certainly testify to this, to what time's the parade? Why didn't my garbage get picked up? Who is my alderman? Can you come get my kid because he doesn't want to go to school? Can you come find my kid because he didn't go to school? And do you know how to do algebra because I can't figure out homework? True.
What time are the fireworks?
What time are the fireworks? Yeah. We have wonderful clerical staff that make sure, that's the boring part, they don't make movies about report writing, but that's what we do. We document everything we do, and we have wonderful staff that make sure that gets processed correctly. And one of the issues that I'm sure was completely unintended, but with the advent of body cameras, our open records requests have gone through the roof. Everybody wants that video, and that video, it's very difficult to make sure that we're protecting the privacy of the individuals in that video. For every one minute of video, it's about a five-minute review for clerical staff to make sure we support being transparent to the community, and we do, they're great tools. But they work long and hard as well to support it. Finally, I saw an image in here, did I? Or did she hit the road? Had to go on the road, one of our young CSO officers, and I'm sure I'm forgetting someone, but our young CSO officers that we've used to supplement our police force and then hopefully a career path. So kids right out of high school coming, just as dedicated as that veteran officer that you, that you see in the parades, that you saw in our Honor Guard. Have Captain Pocorski in the corner, Captain Rollinger, great leadership team in our lieutenants and sergeants, our detective bureau. Really excited to police West Bend and work to make sure we have excellence in policing, continue the accountability that Chief Moyler set as example for us, set the infrastructure in place, and we'll continue that, and then that we're responsive to the community. You don't have to leave. That's music to all our ears, right? That's family that Chief Kudick spoke about. Love all of that. And responsive to the community. So we look forward to meeting each and every one of you in the community, hopefully on a, not on a call for service, but in a great chat, in a wave as the squad drives by, in a friendly smile at the parade as our crime prevention volunteers and our crossing guards who we honored here last council meeting work all together to make sure that we have a safe community that we're proud of. I'm damn proud of every one of them. So with that, I'd like to introduce your four new officers. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Nathan, if you can raise your right hand. Hi, Nathan J. Muhonan.
Hi, Nathan J. Muhonan.
Have been appointed.
Have been appointed.
As police officer.
As a police officer.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
One of the things I was always impressed with Chief Moyler was he had everybody's stats memorized, could tell you everything they did, right? Their hobbies. I can't do that, so I'm going to use some of my notes to make sure I don't say the wrong thing. So Nathan comes from us from Maguannago. He joined the Army in 2013 after serving our country, keeping us free. He then went to UWM Milwaukee, earning a bachelor's in criminal justice with a minor in psychology, and just recently graduated MATC's recruit school in December. Proud to be at his graduation. Nathan, you want to introduce your family to us?
Yes, so this is my fiancee Marlene. We're getting married April 1st of this year, so that's super exciting. This is my mom, Hannah. I would be here to support them and honestly, everybody in this room. I was a CSO for this for six months last year. It was an awesome opportunity to learn the department, learn the city. I was a pro in West Bend. I'm super grateful for all of this. Thank you.
And who's going to pick you back?
Marlene.
Marlene is?
My fiancee.
Who's getting married in April. Woo!
Raise your right hand, Smith. Hi, Samantha M. Humphner.
I'm Samantha M. Humphner.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Sammy comes to us from Green Bay. Went to school for a year in UW-O'Clare and then transferred back to her hometown, caring about her community, wanted to be back there, and finished her three years at UW-Green Bay with a bachelor's in democracy and justice studies. Wicked good. Psych, and psychology minor, and finished her recruit school Northeast Wisconsin Technical College in 2019 and has been serving with the Winnicottani. been serving with the Winnicott Police Department before joining us today. Want to introduce your family and let us know who will be pinning your badge?
My twin brother will be pinning my badge. My father Doug, my niece Paisley, my mom Mary, my sister-in-law Jaclyn, and my nephew Lincoln.
Colin, if you can raise your right hand.
Aye, Colin J. Medved.
Aye, Colin J. Medved.
Having been appointed
Having been appointed.
As police officer
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County
Washington County.
Swear that I will support
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Colin comes from us from Germantown, so local, going to stay in this county and his community to help police and protect and serve. I think that's fantastic. He went to Waukesha Tech College from 2015 to 2018 when he felt a higher calling and joined the Marine Corps. He continues to be active in the Marine Corps Reserve. So we 100% support you in that mission at Geena this way. 100%. Thank you for that. Now why don't you tell us who's going to be pinning your badge?
Well, my mom here. She'll be pinning my badge. Got my stepdad Scott here.
Don't have to be shy. We can come on up.
And my girlfriend Hannah, my grandma, and then my dad.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Erin, if you could raise your right hand.
Aye, Erin A. Eschrich.
Aye, Erin A. Eschrich.
Having been appointed
Having been appointed.
As police officer
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County
Washington County.
Swear that I will support
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Erin. I was struggling with Eschrich. Yes, very good. Thank you. Uncle Thomas Shaboygan, again, local, staying in our area of the state to police, to protect, to serve, to serve our community as a servant. I think that's wonderful as well. Erin went to school in the University of Minnesota, Twin Cities, to earn her bachelor's in child psychology. And recently-ish, finished her master's degree at Concordia in community counseling. So it's a great resource for us to have here on the police department. Also, and Colin, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that Colin graduated recruit school in December at MATC along with Erin. So we had a great class coming out of that recruit school. Who's going to be pinning your badge?
My husband Brian.
I hope you're all kids. Next.
Next.
Sergeant. Just one last comment. I thank you very much for the opportunity to introduce our new officers to the community. Wanted to make a quick comment about our clip-on ties. That's for safety, so if anyone would yank on it, yeah. But they're very hard to wear. Well, I think you all did wonderful putting them on. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, congratulations to all. It's an exciting time for you guys. I know it's exciting for us, so we look forward to seeing you grow in your careers here in the city of West Bend. Thanks for coming out. You're welcome to stay. We have more exciting stuff to talk about. Otherwise, you know, it's okay if you want to leave.
I know, it's like kids.
All right. And while we have our guests leaving here, we'll move on to the consent agenda consisting of items eight through 10.
Motion to approve.
Sorry, good.
Thank you. I'll give that one to Alderman Allen. Any questions? And all the favors, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And move on to our agenda for consideration, number 11, ambulance invoice dispute for Michael B. This is coming back to us again. I guess I'll start off is Mr. Michael Eer. Thank you. Thanks for coming. We did hear a synopsis from the chief at our last meeting, but I'll open up to you, sir, if you have any comments you'd like to give to the council.
Yeah, thanks for listening. I'm sorry that it took so long to get here. I got an ambulance bill that I'm asking if it could possibly be reduced or dismissed. I lost my job out in July of 2020 due to COVID. And I haven't had, I collected unemployment for a while and I haven't had any income coming in since the end of August of 2021. I recently just had surgery. And it's a long, slow process of healing that I had November 9th. I got to see the doctor this Thursday for that surgery to find out if I'm cleared to be able to do things again. And I've just, if there's any questions you guys have, I just, I got so many bills that I have right now. I got, at least I know it sounds pretty bad, but I got 10 credit card bills. I just have a long list of bills. I live with my parents. My dad's here. I live with my parents. My mom has cancer and I live with them, help them out, they help me out. And yeah. I'm just here asking if I can get some help, I guess.
Thanks, Michael.
I'm sorry again for, you know, making appointments and not coming to them. I apologize for that.
Well, we appreciate you being here. Open up, send any questions, Alderman, Model.
Thank you. Michael, do you have prospects of getting back to work anytime soon? Is it, it depends on what your doctor says, as I understand it?
Yeah, it depends on what my doctor says. And I got like a bunch of other kind of like issues I'm dealing with right now. So I don't know if I'm going to actually possibly file for disability. I don't know. I'm just, right now I'm waiting to find out, you know, with the healing. And then I'm confused kind of right now on what to do. I'm thinking about possibly filing for disability. I feel like they're going to laugh at me kind of, but yeah, that was one of my options that I'm thinking about.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Yes.
What is, do we need a motion to deny the request or to approve the request? What is the procedure?
So you could make a motion to deny if you took no action. It would functionally be denying it. Or if there was either a, you could make a motion to accept the request to cancel it, or if there's some type of other forbearance that you are looking for, you could make a motion to have that as an agreement as well.
What was the, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask, I know it's in here and I didn't scroll. What was the amount? That's?
Thirty bucks.
It's thirty bucks a month, but the outstanding balance is 1415 plus 548?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
As I understand it, is the problem with possibly forgiving the rest of the debt is that it sets a precedent, right? That we might get issues like this in the future with somebody that's not in as dire a situation as you are, but can point to this case and say, well, you did it for that guy, you know? That's the problem we have with giving these forgiveness. So I wouldn't have a problem with that myself. I will say that.
That's a good point. Yes, sir.
Would it be, would, what would be the possibility of suspending it for a period of time, say six months or a year, and come back and revisit it and see if the situation has changed?
Do you want to comment, Ian?
Yeah, I mean, you guys could certainly suspend that. I think I would, I would recommend, if you're going to suspend it, just suspending the payment plan for a period of time to allow, you know, him to determine, you know, what's his employment? Is he applying for disability? What is his, you know, future situation? And then it would go back to the payment plan established by the fire department. That way you're not tiptoeing that line of, that justice pointed out of Right. You know, canceling debt without, you know, the legal basis and setting a precedent. Right?
Hold on, Michael.
So just curious, if he were to just stop payment, at what point do we end up writing this off anyhow?
So I don't believe we write off the fire, the ambulance debts unless it's a Medicaid or Medicare or a bankruptcy. We would put it in the tax or the Department of Revenues program
Okay.
To recoup funds.
Okay. Thanks.
So if you, if you did suspend it, it would prevent, it would stop, it would prevent it from being put into that system. The SDC, the state debt collection program. Sorry.
Hold on, Alan.
I'd like to move to suspend the payment plan for six months, revisit, revisit this then.
I second that. I agree.
Yeah. It's been a motion taken. Any discussion on this? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Michael, I'm sorry, I don't know the last name, but Mr. Michael, I feel for you, I really do. I just don't, thirty dollars a month, I know is probably hard if you're not working, but I believe we are not adding any interest to this. It's been suspended. And from my point of view, you know, bankruptcy is an option out there. It sounds like if you have, you know, a lot of credit card debt and surgeries, that's where you're heading. That's what that kind of thing is out there for so that we don't have to do this as a council. And I don't think that, that we should do this or set a precedent as a council to handle this. I think that this matter is better handled if you get an attorney and go the bankruptcy route or debt, you know, consolidation with whoever you choose to. But for that reason, I do not foresee suspending payments or, or even getting involved in this, honestly. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Yep. Did you have a comment? Go ahead.
I just had a question with the, your motion. Do you want it suspended for six months and then automatically renew? Or you said something about revisiting? I just need to give the finance, if this passes, the finance department some kind of direction.
My understanding, as I proposed, it would be a six-month suspension of payments. And then we can revisit this at that time. In other words, they would resume in six months.
They would resume in six months. Okay. I just wanted to make that clear.
If there was not some additional request for relief.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion or comments? Yes, sir.
Just going to agree with Megan. I think this, just us getting involved in this sets a precedent. I don't think it's our, it's a matter between them and the fire department, I think so. I won't support that.
I guess I do have to say that suspending it for six months, I think is our way of not establishing a negative precedent. I mean, it's just suspending the payment. It's not, it's not knocking down the payment at all. So I'm in favor of it, for sure. Does it, do you find this helpful? A six-month suspension of the payment?
I mean, it will help, yeah. It will help. And the bankruptcy thing, like you were talking about, that's the absolute last thing I want to do, you know? I have like 750 credit, which ain't the best, but it's all right. And that, like filing for bankruptcy is, that's something I don't want to do at all whatsoever. But that's, is an option, but it's, you know, the very, very, very last option. I just thought I'd come to you guys, you know, I appreciate your time. It was interesting watching all, everything going on. You know, if you can't help me at all, that's, you know, fine with me. I just appreciate it. And yeah, I mean, the six months, it would help. You know, it's just the whole thirty dollars a month isn't a lot, but you know, that's eight years it's going to take me if I, you know, for, to pay thirty dollars a month, it'll take eight years or so. And that's a long time. And, you know, but I understand where everyone's coming from. I mean, whatever's meant to happen is going to happen.
Thanks, Michael. With that, I will call for a vote. And if you don't mind, can we make this a roll call?
No objection.
What's that?
No objection to making a roll call.
Thanks.
It'll be regarding suspending payments for the six months, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Alderman Bushlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
No.
Alderman Kahler?
No.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Arons?
No.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
No.
Pretty sure it's a tie.
It is a tie.
Well, Michael, you're learning so much tonight about how government works. So in the case of a tie, the mayor gets to break the tie. And it's actually the first time that I've gotten to do this since becoming mayor. So congratulations to you.
No pressure there.
Yeah, no pressure. To be frank, you know, I did hear the feedback from our fire chief last, last meeting and we discussed this pretty far in depth. And I do agree that with some of the comments, that a thirty-dollar-a-month payment, I mean, I'm proud that you've been able to cover that cost thus far. And you made the comment yourself that if, you know, you don't want to have to keep doing this for eight more years, well, if we delay you by six months, I mean, that balance is still there, right? So with that, I'm going to vote no, break the tie. But encourage you to, you know, keep trucking along, keep, keep going, you know, getting your feet. I'm optimistic for you. You have a great attitude about yourself and I hope that continues, so.
All right.
Thanks so much. Thanks for being there.
Thanks for your time, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to reports. Number 12, a report by Alderman Allen regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
We had our first bid board meeting in January on the 4th. We were all charged up, brand-new to the year. We got a financial report on the close of 2021 as well as the 2022 budget. We mentioned the appointment of Peggy Fisher in December to a second three-year term on the downtown bid board. Thank you for your service, Peggy. We also held elections, our annual elections for officers. We also held elections, our annual elections for officers. Mike Usar was elected president, returning as president. Tony Jason will be our vice president and Peggy Fisher is going to be our secretary. We discussed trash and street cleaning options and we talked to Doug Newman, who told us about the process and, and then the final thing we discussed was Christmas tree decorations. And they are all down by now except for the trees. The trees that are wrapped in lights and garland will stick around for winter warm-up, which is this coming weekend. I encourage you all to go out and get cold.
Thanks so much. Any questions for Alderman Allen? Then we'll move to 13, a report by, I believe, Alderman Model regarding the planning commission meeting.
Sure, I'll take it. Yeah, Jed, jump in if I miss anything. We only really had two significant items. This is the planning commission meeting that happened also on January 4th. We went through the conditional use permits and the site plan for the Riverwalk renovation that we discussed the night before at the council meeting. This was just tidying that up. And we also talked about some, a sight line in the back of Dairy Queen that was disrupting some neighbors. And we had, the neighbors were here and described the situation and it was a bit of a spirited part of the meeting. But we came to, I think they were looking for a variance on the fence, right? And there was some confusion about the, what was submitted. But we, actually Kevin Chaneman, the owner of the Dairy Queen, came in and cleared up that confusion. And I think we, he was just trying, he's just trying to do the right thing by these people, which is great. There was a problem with people coming through the drive-through, I mean, as you all know, it's a brand-new Dairy Queen, the people coming through the drive-through at some point were pointing their headlights at, you know, after dark, right into people's living rooms and stuff. And there were other privacy issues as well, catcalling and whatnot, and people in their backyards. And, yeah, it's true, it's true. I think that was during construction and I'm not sure people would be doing that from their cars as they're getting, as they're getting an ice cream cone, but you never know. So we did, we did agree, not unanimously, but we did agree to let the city staff kind of take some license in getting this done. And hopefully everybody's, everybody's happy with the result.
Sounds good. Any questions for Alderman Model? Then we'll go into our closed session item, number 14, entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to State Statute, Section 19.85, Part 1(c), considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data for any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This is for the administrator's annual review. If I can have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. I'll give it to Model and Allen and roll call, please.
Alderman Bushlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Kahler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Arons?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
We're now in closed session.
Thank you. We will be adjourning from closed session, so I'll open up if there's any announcements for the go-to order. I did have a quick comment. Our first meeting for our fire review task force was set to meet today. We ran into some quorum issues, so that will get rescheduled to Wednesday at 1:00. Just for those to know, we have Alderman Berquist and Kahler, including myself on this committee, along with our chief, Deputy Chief Beistol and Hoff, and of course, our city administrator. I'll put up if there's any other comments. Yes, sir.
Once again, the winter warm-up this Saturday and Sunday in downtown West Bend and the Hugh Jazz Bike, Fat Tire Bike Race. Yeah, Hugh Jazz.
Yep. I knew what you meant.
Not stumbling over it, that's what it is. It's a big deal. It's a Fat Tire Bike Race in the snow at Regner Park. I invite you all to come and enjoy.
Should be fun. Any other announcements?
Well, I guess as long as we're at it, I'll announce that the HBBA is doing a hot tub giveaway and that's going to get kicked off at the, what's the event that's coming up at the fairgrounds? It's like a home show, right? 10 to 4, Saturday and Sunday, we'll be out there selling tickets. Come buy a ticket and win a hot tub.
Anything else? All right, well, having no further business besides the closed session, I'll adjourn. Thanks.